For Monday, November 20th, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, welcome to the City Council meeting. Thank you very much to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to a former member of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Thieson, or sorry, Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the City Council meeting held Monday, November 6th as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. We also have another set of council meeting minutes from the Council Committee of the Whole Budget Discussions, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole Meeting held November 15th through 17th as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented? Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Actually, I voted, but I meant to mention in the Council Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting, there was a mistake in regards to the performing arts. It was said at $80,000. It was actually $200,000. So if that could be amended to show that, then that would be good.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. We'll catch that.
And by saying that, I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And this brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matters, so long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. I know that we have a couple of public hearings on our agenda tonight, and so we'll ask anybody who is here for those just to wait a few minutes until we get to them. But I know that there was one delegation, sorry, two delegations that let us know ahead of time that they'd be here, and the first is Mr. Renee Charbonneau with an update on the Afghanistan war monument. Charbonneau, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given and council for allowing me to come and present to you tonight. I'm a pretty happy woman. Our unveiling ceremony went off quite well in spite of Mother Nature's rather frigid temperatures. We had quite a showing from our Silver Cross families, council, the County of Grand Prairie, a number of dignitaries from the Loyal Edmonton Regiment, a full color guard from the Royal Canadian Legion and the Army-Navy Air Force Veterans Club. And our monument got rave reviews. And I brought City Council a copy of the Western Sentinel, and it's written by Captain Richard Dumas of the Loyal Edmonton Regiment with a photo taken by Grant Crey, also of the Loyal Edmonton Regiment, of the sunset in the monument. So that's for council's keeping. And then something else wonderful that came out of the ceremony was the fact that our MLA, Wayne Drysdale, utilized his time for his members' statement on November 8th. And he dedicated it to the Afghanistan War Monument and the unveiling. And it was really rewarding to have that entire speech dedicated to what we accomplished here in Grand Prairie in Phase One. So again, I have a copy of that. Along with that is a copy of a letter from Wayne Drysdale because as a result of all of my volunteerism over the number of years and this particular monument project, I've been nominated to become a member of the Order of St. George. St. George was the patron, is the patron saint of veterans and cadets. And as a postulate of the Order, which is what I will be in January, with becoming a dame or a knight in October. So there's some information on that for council, as well as a little bit of a thank you for everything that you did that allowed us to bring in all of those families, the members of the Loyal Edmonton Regiment and the Loyal Edmonton Regiment Pipe and Drum Band. I know that there were some pretty wonderful discussions about a potential opportunity for our city that took place between yourself, Mayor Given, and the Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel of the Loyal Edmonton Regiment, John McCulley. And I'm really hoping for our air cadets and Army cadets and our upcoming sea cadets that those discussions bear some fruit. I want to thank you again deeply for the support and just wanted to report to you that it was an amazing success.
Great. Well, thanks very much, Ms. Charbonneau. Congratulations to you, not just on your recognition, but on all the hard work that you put in to make that day a reality and this monument a reality. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see any. So I think with that, you have, congratulations to City Council. Thank you very much. You can maybe just leave the documentation with Mr. Olenger there, and he'll make sure that we circulate it among council members. Thanks very much, Renee. Our next delegation that let us know ahead of time that they wish to present was Mr. Dan Wong from Bearstone, Ketchum. And I don't know, Mr. Wong, come on forward. I don't know if you have anybody else that's going to join you. Mr. Vaskevich, welcome, gentlemen. If you'd just like to introduce yourselves and provide council an update on the topic that you want to raise.
Thank you, Mayor Beal, and good evening, council. My name's Dan Wong. I'm with Bearstone Associates Engineering. I'm joined today by Grant Vaskevich with Alberta Lands. And we're here to speak on item number 9.3.3 on your agenda, which is the time extension request for the registration of subdivision Hidden Valley. So just to give you a little bit of background, since the application for endorsement was submitted, our client has met all conditions outlined by the City of Grand Prairie and by Alberta Land Titles Office. Although we do appreciate the recommendation in the report, which is offering a six-month time extension to July 30th, 2018, our client is hoping that he could get the full one-year extension, which is typical of this type of time request extension. There have been a number of circumstances in the past few years that have created difficulties in getting the subdivision registered properly with land titles. The main reasons center around the clients or our client's estate and financial planning. As we all know, the last couple of years, the provincial and federal governments have been making all sorts of changes to the tax laws, and they are creating significant amounts of uncertainty for our client, for everybody, actually, especially when it comes to passing assets down to family members. Even now, the federal finance minister hasn't settled on any new tax or final tax reform bill, and the government continues to insist that tax changes that they are going to implement are going to be retroactive to a certain date. So all that is up in the air. Failing to get an adequate time extension for Mr. Vaskevich puts a couple of risks in play for him. The first risk is undue financial hardship because in the next six months, it could trigger unintended tax consequences. And that's if the land registration isn't handled properly. And we feel that our client really deserves to know what he's getting himself into before the tax laws change. The second risk is that we may have to come back to council in six months asking for another six-month time extension, which isn't going to look good for anyone. Our client and his family have a long history of investment in the city of Grand Prairie. He continues to invest and develop in Grand Prairie, and he's a lifelong resident. They support countless not-for-profit agencies throughout the region and have donated land where our new hospital is slated to open in 2019. So the next year is going to come and go really quickly for everyone, and this council has a chance to show the community that they understand the human impact part of the equation. And you also have a chance to show that your customer focused by providing a little bit of help within your power to grant a landowner this little bit of time extension at virtually no cost to the city of Grand Prairie. So please keep in mind that this request is regarding the registration of land only. This isn't a development permit. This isn't rezoning or a building permit or anything that is going to intensify the use at this point. They're basically wanting to subdivide three parcels off of the existing land. It's 5.6 hectares out of a total of 70 hectares, so it represents about 7% of the landmass on this entire site. Development that may impact the city will still have to go through due process in the future. So there's other chances for, if the city has any concerns, he will see Mr. Vaskevich or you guys will see Mr. Vaskevich again. So in closing, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration, and we'll be around if you need any questions, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Wong. Any questions for the delegation? So this will come up on our agenda later on as referenced, 9.3.3, under the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. I don't see anybody else ringing in with any questions for the delegation. So if not, it sounds like you made your case pretty clear, and it doesn't look like council members have any questions. Thank you. Thanks very much, gentlemen. Okay, so this is the delegation portion of the agenda. If there was anybody that was here to address any items, again, that weren't the subject of a public hearing, we have some land use bylaw amendments, the Hillside Area Revitalization Plan overlay, and another land use bylaw amendment. And it looks like nobody's rushing the stage, so you're probably all here for the rest of those. So we will just remind everybody that this opportunity to present to council does exist at every regular city council meeting, should anybody wish to make use of it. It's just one of the ways that you can get an issue in front of city council. So we'll close our delegation portion of our agenda. We'll move on to those public hearings. We'll call to order the public hearing for land use bylaw amendment C-1260-81, Business Industrial to Urban Reserve. Call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration received an application to amend the land use bylaw to a zone aside from IB, which stands for Business Industrial District, to UR, which stands for Urban Reserve District. Before going into the details of the application, I would like to give you an overview of the site as well as the adjacent uses. So the subject site we're talking about is approximately 12.2 hectare in size. It is located on the east side of the CN to the west of 92nd, north of 68th Avenue. I would like to mention that 96th Street is a designated arterial road, even though some sections of it are still only two ways, but in the future, it's going to be built as an arterial, meaning for lanes. As for the existing uses close to the subject site, on the east side, there are mainly residential neighborhoods such as countryside. The area to the north is still undeveloped, however, it is designated for light industrial uses and commercial uses as well. So most of the area close by that has been developed, as mentioned before, is mainly So before getting into the analysis, I would like to mention that within the context of the land use bylaw, the IB land use district, which is the existing one for the site, allows for light industrial and commercial uses. As for the land use district, UR, the one being applied for, it allows for mainly agricultural activities and farming activities. One point I would like also to mention is the designation in the Southeast Area Structure Plan of the subject site. As you know, we have different layers of planning documents in the city. The one, the highest one would be the municipal development plan, followed by the area structure plans or the equivalent, and then the outline plans. And usually for new areas, what happened is that zoning is assigned after the outline plans are adopted. So to give you a little bit of history about how the existing land use district, the IB district, came about, I will explain the adoption of the governing ASP and what, and the amendments that happened later on. So in 2001, the southern part of the site was designated as commercial, and the northern part was designated as industrial/businesses. Accordingly, the subject site was rezoned from UR to IB, which is the existing land use district. In 2010, the ASP governing the site was amended to redesignate the industrial business area, which is the one to the north, as higher density housing. However, the designation, sorry, the designation was approved, however, we did not receive an application to adapt or amend an existing outline plan or to redesignate or rezone the site to reflect the new designation in the ASP. So just, I know I have mentioned a lot of info, so I would like to actually visually show what I was talking about. So if we look at the slide here, we'll see that the site has two different designations as we speak in the ASP. The red one stands for commercial, and the beige one, the one to the north, stands for higher density housing. Usually in our land use bylaw, higher density housing will be either medium-density land use district or high-density land use district. So I just would like to start the analysis of the application, just to give you an idea of what, how I'm going to actually proceed. So I'm going to start by analyzing the use on the site, and then I will move on to analyze the impact of the zoning, if adopted, on the whole city. Following that, I'm going to tie this analysis to the provincial land use policies we have. So as mentioned before, the existing land, so the existing use and the neighboring one are mainly residential, so having agricultural activities can be, is not compatible with existing uses or the future uses such as the commercial one. Also, movement of agricultural machinery is to and out of the site can slow down traffic along two of the busiest arterials. I'm talking about 92nd Street and 68th. So farming might be a suitable use for totally new areas that are almost empty, closer to the border of the city. However, in our case, the site is almost entirely located within mostly developed From a financial point of view, if a zoning is approved and the subject site is used as a farmland, it is expected, based on the information we got from the taxation assessment and taxation department, that the assessment of the site is going to be under $10,000. The existing or the current assessment is $1.7 million, and taxation is tied to assessment. That's why it would be a big loss to the city. And also, if the zoning is approved, it can establish a precedent for zoning so that landowners can lower their poverty assessment until such a time when development is more feasible for other activities. And also because if a zoning is approved, the tax assessment and also the tax assessment will go down, that might be a disincentive for owners to start developing the site as soon as possible. I'll just move on to talking about the provincial land use policies and how this application is related to it. So one of the main principles of the provincial land use policies is that municipalities should establish land use districts that complement their financial viability and also contribute to their financial health. Such a zoning, if adopted, will result in loss, in tax losses, and that's why it can impact the financial viability of the municipality. That's why the proposed amendment does not, is not consistent with the aforementioned Based on the analysis mentioned before, and to conclude, I would like to mention that because administration believes that the application can have negative impact on the financial stability of the municipality, and also because if a zone, the potential activities will not be compatible with the existing ones, we recommend that administration to get first aiding to the bylaw and to defeat it at the second or the third aiding. Thank you. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks very much, Wally. Are there any questions for administration at this point? We'll have another opportunity for questions for administration just before we close and after we've heard any public presentations, but there is a chance for council at this point if you have any initial questions you want to ask admin. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. My question for administration is what, like you've got $1,007,000 there to $10,000, so what's the current property taxes being paid now on this parcel land, and what do we forecast them being, I guess?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not quite sure about the exact number, but what is being paid now, and the applicant can correct me if I'm mistaken, is about $32,000. What will be paid if the zoning is, a zoning is approved, it will be less than $1,000.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for administration at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in, so we will call for delegations related to this. Is there anyone here to speak in support of the proposed amendment? Gentlemen, welcome. Introduce yourselves for recording secretary and those watching at home.
Thank you, Mayor Given and council. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. This is with me today is Scott Pravitz with Provincial Lands, representing the landlord. So we submitted this application some while ago. I'm going to give you a little bit of history on the file because it's somewhat confusing just based on the description there. This started as UR, so ultimately, we're trying to get it back to Urban Reserve District the way that it is. Originally, when this parcel was purchased in 2006 by Provincial Lands, it had already been rezoned to IB, which is a business industrial district. That district proved to be very difficult in the market of Grand Prairie, especially in that location. So through fairly extensive discussions and council meetings and whatnot, it was our firm and Mr. Pravitz's company that decided to and were successful in amending the Southeast Area Structure Plan. That's the reason, so that's how far it went with rezoning to multifamily and commercial. The reason it did not proceed any further and the reason that only that proceeded was because we wanted to get council's appetite for that type of a land use versus the land use that was existing as industrial. So a lot of issues there with proximity to rail and things like that. So there's a lot going on in this parcel. It's been very, very extensively marketed. Obviously, a land developer has owned it for approximately 11 years, which is not ideal in a land developer's world. So the, so from that point, we've looked at several different options. We've looked at developing an industrial. We've looked at developing it with multifamily, with commercial, even single-family residential, and most have met opposition from either the market or city administration. So our intention is ultimately to reduce the costs on this parcel of land. Currently, it costs a significant amount of money just to have. So the, there's several locations where that does, I'll run through that here shortly, but the long-term goal is to get to, get the parcel to a farm position where we can actually cover some of the costs off and solve a lot of the problems essentially that are, that are occurring with the parcel today. The costs that are happening, I mean, taxes is one. That's actually not the reason that there's significant other, or other costs that are much more significant than that. So for example, you know, things like mulching weed control, wetlands, and I'll get into all that here in a second. The, our long-term goal is to develop this as hayland, so until such time that we can develop it, there is no intention to move the parcel at this time. So our goal is to try and, try and solve some of those problems. So with hayland, we would be, we would be looking at basically a fescue, alfalfa, brom type of a mix, so a fairly minimally intrusive type of farming, which requires very small equipment. So to address the three issues that have been brought up by planning, I'm going to go through compatibility, the farm traffic, and I'll touch a little bit on taxes. So again, just to reiterate, this is about cost savings. So the current, current costs that we have on this parcel, every single year, essentially for the last 11 years, mostly recently, we've been doing mulching on the property. There's a significant amount of poplar trees around this parcel, so poplars spread like weeds, and every, every year, we end up mulching the property, so fairly significant costs there. We've had weed, weed control issues and concerns from enforcement and with the city that an unfarmed, like this parcel sits undeveloped, so it still has all its topsoil, it still has all its growing capacity. It hasn't been stripped as most developed land would be. So today, it sits with a, with a high potential for growing weeds when nothing else is growing there. So, so the intention would be to get rid of that, and how we would do that is farming. We also have gone through, preliminarily, we've gone through all of the wetland approvals and compensation packages and whatnot that are required for the, for development of this parcel. So we've been through that. We actually have the Alberta Environment Approval with us today if anyone is interested, but it's quite old. I mean, it's, the compensation's been paid and no further requirements with wetlands are there. However, over an 11-year period, wetlands tend to reestablish themselves, and we deal with, with the maintenance on that and ensuring that that approval stays in place. So what we're trying to do essentially with this is nothing that's abnormal within the city. So for council's benefit, there are several parcels, a couple of them are within 500 meters of this parcel of land that are zoned UR, that are currently farmed within the city. So there's an area in Royal Oaks that's farmed, there's an area in Riverstone that's farmed. There's, there's several areas adjacent to residential lands that do have that. So we're not trying to do something that's abnormal within the city of Grand Prairie. We're just trying to cover off some of the costs associated with it. One of the other concerns that we have with the site or issues we have with it is to do with, just with site management. So many of the problems that were raised by planning today are a direct result of not being able to farm the site. So things such as illegal dumping, dust control, weed management on sitelessness, things like that, all could be resolved if we were able to farm this parcel of land. So that was the original intention. When we actually submitted this application, we met with development officers and planning prior to submitting the application to zoned UR. We wanted to farm the parcel. But farming is not allowed under the current IB district, so this was the alternative that we took as an approach. So to address the compatibility issue, as far as planning reports, sites, the sites that are, sites are compatible or defined as compatible when they do not have significant negative impacts on each other. So we're, we're planning to hay this land, so basically a very minimal impact. There would be basically no dust that would be created by, by any type of farming equipment. It's very small equipment, and it's done once per year. So if anyone's... So if anyone's familiar with farmer, with hay equipment, we're talking like 16 feet wide, not 60-foot cultivators to, to access the site. So to deal with the farm machinery that, that would come in and out of the site, the disruption would be minimal as it would only be once a year. Equipment for hanging is small and, and you know, even, even grain equipment these days is, with technological advances, is, is basically non-intrusive, so there's no dust that comes up from it. It's, everyone's heard the term zero till, that's a, that's an advantage that has been coming the last 10 years over for farming. So the, so we, we have a bit of a concern, a concern with, with how that was presented. We don't necessarily know if there was a, if there are concerns with farm equipment driving down the road. At the end of the, of the presentation, perhaps we could have planning, just, just to clarify if they had talked to like transportation, engineering, whatever else as far as whether they felt there was concerns with, with the equipment traveling down the road. So because from our engineering perspective, the roads are built for that, we have farm equipment moving down them every day, so it's a, it's, it's not really a concern from our end. To, we looked at the economic impact. I actually somewhat disagree with planning's report. So the site assessed today at, at 1.7 million, dropping to $10,000. So 1.7 million, just for anyone who's curious, is approximately 70% more than what they paid for the parcel in 2006. So, so it's been inflated to, to 1.7. So actual value of the land today would not be 1.7. That could very well be the assessed value, but so there has been no improvements to the site to date. So in our books, it would be worth approximately a million dollars. The approved rezoning, I don't believe would result in an assessment under $10,000. I can't get my mind to that number. Raw farmland currently selling for approximately $500,000 a quarter, so that's in the $3,500 per acre range. So I, I, I believe the drop to 10,000 is maybe a little, little understated. Report discusses struggles of fast-growing cities and demands placed on infrastructure due to these parcels of land. So this parcel currently has no infrastructure installed on it. It has, requires no maintenance from the city and has no population that utilizes any of the city or emperor's services or facilities. As far as the statutory planning and future development portion of the report, planning's assessment of the proposal having a detrimental impact to the future development of the land is, is somewhat misleading. As council is aware, development cannot occur under UR zoning. So it's a preemptive zoning that prepares us for development at such time that it's necessary. So 100% of the city's developed land started with UR designation, as did this. So this parcel of land gets UR, it does not make it undevelopable, it just means there's another step required to complete development on the parcel. So and then we would rezone as market and smart growth dictates. So there, as I stated earlier, there are several parcels of UR land within the city, a couple very, very close to this, this area. So to address the couple of risks that were brought up, we do disagree with planning's report on, on, with regards to risk, there would be very little incentive to rezone future parcels for developers, and we, we represent a lot of developers in the city of Grand Prairie. This is the first time this has ever come up. I don't, it's a very unique situation where we're dealing with a bunch of external issues that are, are costing a lot of money. It doesn't make sense to rezone parcels back to UR once they are rezoned. If, if they haven't been stripped and they're, continue to be farmed, they're assessed at farm values. If they have been stripped, in order to rezone them to UR and, and get a farm assessment, we would have to replace all the topsoil. There'd be a significant amount of cost of coming to doing that, so I, I have very little concern that, that this is setting a precedent in the, in the city of Grand Prairie. Also, approving the application would, would definitely not slow down future development as stated in the report. Provincial Lands wants nothing more than to develop this property. Believe me, I've been working on it for approximately 10 years now, trying to find a suitable development to, to proceed there. Attempts have been made to market the property as industrial, commercial, residential parcels. All land uses have been met, like I said, with some type of opposition, whether that's just the market and economy, or whether it's administration's opposition to the, the land use that we're proposing. So we do ask council to approve our request to rezone the property to Urban Reserve. This will assist us in retaining the financial viability of the property to be developed as industrial, commercial, or residential, should it so be. We hope this would, would lead to development of the property in the, in the near future, which is obviously our intention, at which time we would rezone. So I don't know if Mr. Pravitz has anything he wants to add?
That was good. The one thing I will add is the owner of Provincial Lands, our company has ties to a couple of local organizations that have, have brought up the idea of doing like a community garden somewhere, and we would like, yeah, this, we would definitely be involved, would be interested in that. I don't know exactly how that would work or how that would look like from a, from a city standpoint, but that is something that we would be open to on this piece of property as well. Everything else that Scott said, I mean, that's, yeah, it was, it was all there, and if you have any questions, we're, we're here for you.
I think the word you're looking for is that was exhaustive. Meaning cover, I'm not.
I apologize for that.
Scott might, Scott might be exhausted, exhausted, but I think it covered everything. I think you're right. Any questions for the delegation? Any questions for the delegation? Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. It was very insightful as well as exhaustive. Do you have any sense of how long it might be before you would be able to turn this into a viable commercial property for sale or for development?
Yeah, I mean, that's just, it's market-driven, right? We've had this for 11 years and we've tried, we, like you said, we went through that, we tried to do residential, we've looked at commercial, we've looked at industrial, and it's, it's, if, if the market is there, we will develop it. I mean, that's what we do, we, we develop land. I mean, if there's a demand, we will develop it.
So my understanding is that, that what you want to do in the meantime is turn it into a less expensive piece of property to manage until that time?
Yeah, just offsetting the costs, like it just, 11 years of this is just, at some point, something's got to, got to give.
It's been a, the, that area, when you think of it, I mean, it, it has a lot of residential population around it. I mean, it's got Signature Falls, Countryside South, North, Cobblestone, there's, there's a lot of, of people living in that area. It's still not enough for, to market it as commercial. The, there's a very large population base that's required to, to draw businesses in, and because of its proximity to the, you know, you gotta be across the tracks, it's off resources road, so there's, it's, it's a difficult parcel to market. It's certainly not viable as 100% commercial. So the, you know, we've looked at, they're just doing that south portion as commercial, but the, so the intention is there, I mean, I could show you probably 15 different concepts that we've drawn for this site. So it's, it's there, the intention's there, we're not giving up on it, it's, we're just trying to, to ride the, ride our time until, until it is ready, so.
Thank you.
I see Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just trying to remember here, because 2006, I think 92nd Street was paved at that point, but I'm just trying to get my head around if there's been any more infrastructure put in that area that would help make it more developable, like is there, is it fully serviced or is it?
No, so, so thank you, there, there's, there have been water mains, sewer mains and whatnot installed within the adjacent developments, so within Countryside North, Countryside South and whatnot. It's actually a difficult parcel to service to start with, the sanitary sewer has to go through someone else's property, so, so we, we actually have to have a deal on the table before, before we'd be able to develop it. There's, there is not a single pipe on that land. There's actually some restrictive things, there's some ATCO pipeline, high-pressure pipelines that run through it, which make it even more difficult to develop, but it, but there's no, no city or aquitery infrastructure installed, so.
Okay, and the intent, if it was, excuse me, switched to you, or would be to start farming it like this spring, like immediately if, if this was approved?
Yeah, we actually, thank you for, for that question. We actually started already, we just assumed that we would just start farming it and we, we, we tilled it here this last summer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Plott. Councilor Menhass?
Thank you very much for, for the mayor, and thanks Scott, you guys did that pretty detailed. And got a question for, like when you change from commercial to farming land, is the law, you still have to pay three acre, three acre land as a commercial tax, then rest of can be farming? Or you do farming whole thing, but you still pay three acre land as a commercial tax? Is, according to my knowledge, it, it is, but I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, my understanding, the taxation is based on the assessment time and whatever the mill rate is for that use. So the, and typically in developments, and it would be very unlikely that this parcel would be developed all at once. So I would suggest that if, you know, if a commercial purchaser comes along, we would develop the southern portion of the land adjacent, on the corner of the two arterials, which I'm, that would roll over to, we'd, it would be stripped. I, I believe, and I'm not an expert with the city's taxation department, but I believe their trigger is when the land is stripped. So, so at, at such time that we have a, a purchaser and we need to service the site, I think that's when it would, would roll over to, to a different use essentially.
Yeah, I understand was it's, it's not city, but it's a provincial law that to do when you switch from commercial to the farming land. It doesn't matter you go in the farm in the county or city. That's what I have to clarify later, but that's what my question is.
Thanks, Councilor Menhass. See anybody else with any questions for the delegation? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you very much, Scott, for, for your presentation. Just a question, I'm trying to wrap my head around where the access to this, to this plot of land would be for the farm equipment. I'm assuming along 92nd on the west side of that road, traveling south, but I'm just kind of trying to, if this does get rezoned, I'm trying to figure out in my head what traffic's going to do and how long are going to have to have like a tractor, for instance, or a baler driving up 92nd Street there, which, you know, sometimes a year is.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Thiessen. The, so we'll throw the map up here, it'll show you where that is, and so the, the, yeah, the easiest way to find the access is to just look where all the illegal dumping piles are, because that's where they tend to be. So there's a fairly large number of them up in that corner. I would, in my past life as a younger lad, I managed to drive a lot of farm equipment. It's actually not that slow, so I would suspect it would be a very short period of time, like probably 15, 20 minutes to get from the perimeter of the city limits to that access point. And most hay equipment is not going to hold up traffic really at all. So that, that's the location, so that's where it would go, and, and that would remain because anything closer to that intersection potentially would be somewhat dangerous through, even once this is developed, I, I suspect the closest access to 68th Avenue will be at the, where that RS there is, which is the access coming out of Countryside North.
Right, and changing the designation to a UR designation and then haying up the, the land, do you think that's going to stop the dumping when the hay starts to grow?
Generally does. What we usually see, and this is very common in development, is once we've stripped a site, we put up, we always have a few topsoil piles or whatnot, and, and if we keep them very clean and neat and tidy, it tends to be that people are hesitant to go in and dump the, the first load. As soon as we start with, as soon as one or two get in there, then it's kind of a free-for-all and you, you go for everything from sod to stoves and fridges and whatever else, and that all comes back on the developer ultimately to clean up. So, so it's, it can be a pretty big undertaking if, if land's left kind of uncared for. You don't very often, I mean, the reason, the biggest reason we want this as farmland is you don't very often see people vandalizing farmland. And, and as far as compatibility, I, I would suspect there's not a lot of complaints within the city about the farmland behind my house. Like I don't, we don't very often hear that. We usually hear, yeah, don't take my farmland away. So the, you know, once the development proceeds, that's when we start hearing, hearing about things like that. So, so that's the intention, we, we think it'll clean it up a lot. Hayland is, you know, it happens quite often, actually, the quarter directly east of Signature Falls is hayed every single year. It looks good, it's a, you know, a nice clean quarter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor Clayton?
Mayor Given, just a question in regards to the process of farming. I'm not a farmer, I know nothing about farmer, but I'm going to assume something and you can correct me if I'm wrong. The equipment would come in in the spring and the equipment would come back in the fall, so basically, equipment is driving down the road twice a year.
It would be twice a year maximum, actually, so unique to hay farming, it's actually once a year. So hay, hayland tends, you don't seed with hay, so hay regrows every year. So the, so they would be, in, in probably July, they'd be going out there with a haybine to cut it and a baler to bale it.
So it would be impact once a year?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue, council? So gentlemen, thank you very much, thanks for being here this evening to present. Is there anybody else here to speak to this proposed amendment and change the land use bylaw to rezone this piece of property from IB to UR? I'll ask one last time if there's anyone else to present with respect to the subject matter of this public hearing. Okay, seeing nobody coming forward, I'll ask council if there are any last questions for administration. Councilor Bressi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just curious, was there any conversations with transportation or engineering about impacts or concerns?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, there has been a discussion with engineering and transportation, and the comment about the agricultural machinery was shared with engineering, and basically because we don't know exactly what they are going to do, so it might be a potential issue for 96 and, sorry, 92nd and 68th Avenue. As for other comments, all of them were shared, sorry, came from other departments such as the comment for the assessment and taxation. It was not our assessment, it all came from different departments.
Councilor Friesen?
Thank you. Somewhere in the back of my mind, it seems to me, and I, I may be wrong or I may have misunderstood, but the new MGA, there's something about, as soon as a developer, a developer purchases land with the intent, however far away down the road to develop, that it must then be assessed under the zoning intended for the development? Is that, did I misunderstand that completely?
Mr. Blackberry?
So you, Mr. Mayor, as, as far as I understand it in terms of the assessment and the likes, usually is, my understanding of how it's done here in the city, it has to do with the use and the buildings and the likes and the size. So my understanding, based on the comments and discussion with assessment, excuse me, and taxation department is that if the zoning is approved, this will lower the assessment, as I mentioned before, which also is, related to assessment is the taxation. So once the assessment is lower, taxation will go down, and in this case particularly, it would be a huge gap. And that's why when, during the discussion or the analysis, as I was trying to bring it to your attention, that based on the provincial land use policies, municipalities, municipalities should consider such as the financial health and viability as one of their considerations. And yes, it might be a one-off application as mentioned by the applicant, however, once the precedent is established, it could be a common application. And I just would like to go back to one of the comments made by the applicant about existing UR, yes, the existing UR sites that are being used for agriculture activities, however, to the best of my knowledge, none of them was already zoned for commercial or industrial use and down zoned to a zone that allows agriculture, they're already in existence, and none of them is under an ASP or a similar planning study. That's why, because we have the study, and the reason we have the study is because we look to the future, which is what is planning is about, that's why the situation of the subject site is different from existing ones. I hope I was able to answer your question.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Well, Ed, I, I have a question for you. Does, under the land use bylaw, does administration, um, under the land use bylaw and the current zoning, does administration have any ability to provide, administration or council, sorry, have any ability to provide a waiver in terms of the, the use? Uh, so, we heard from the delegation that a part of the concern, that, that the property taxes are a part of the issue, but not the major cost, uh, seemed to be the, the way that it was presented. If it was about allowing, uh, farming use on this zoning, is there any opportunity for council? So, is there any opportunity, basically, for a waiver to allow farming under its current zoning?
To you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, what comes to my mind is, uh, two different scenarios. The first one, which is not applicable, is if we have a DC. In a DC, the council can designate what could be used or not. The second one would be amending an existing land use district to allow a specific use or to add it to the tables. Although I can't think right now of anything else.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Clayton.
Yeah, just following on the mayor's comments, if we wanted to add farming as a discretionary use in an IB, it's a potential?
To you, Mr. Mayor, uh, if council is to entertain the idea of actually amending the whole IB to add it, uh, I can see it as a potential, uh, consideration, uh, which means that this will have to be basically applied for, uh, and, or either by the applicant, or it could be done by the administration. But there might be conflicts if we look closely at the district itself that can prevent it, but theoretically speaking, I'm just, uh, talking just without going over all the uses in the table, it could be done.
One, uh, other question, is there any history or any ability of council, to have a, a temporary zoning? So, for example, if it was, it was zoned potentially for UR until such time as, as a development was knocking on the landowner's door or, or the landowner saw an opportunity for development, similar in a development, you know, where we have, um, applications for development except for that get extended, is there a potential for a temporary, um, zoning?
Uh, to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, from my background in Manitoba, it could be done somehow over there. I don't think it could be done here. Like, in this, basically what my understanding of your question is that, like, say, within five years, it will expire. So, I don't know if it could be, I have, I haven't seen any similar kind of example in Alberta. I don't, I don't think.
To your knowledge, though, it's not an MGA issue, it's a current, um, it's a city of Grand Prairie. It would be a city of Grand Prairie issue, or is it, is it allowable in the MGA or UR?
To you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that, just talking at it without exploring it, I don't think it could be done under the existing regulation of the MGA.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Willie. Uh, council, I don't see any other questions. Uh, so if there aren't any other questions at this time, I will, uh, close the bu- public hearing and we'll move on, uh, to business arising. Uh, we have a recommendation in our report from administration. At minimum, we need to do first reading, uh, to get, uh, the subject on, uh, so we can move on to discussion and debate around second reading. So I'll look for motion for first reading, Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will make a motion that we give first reading to bylaw C 1260-81, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. So there's no discussion and debate on first reading. Uh, we get to do that under second reading, so I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, uh, and so can have a, we can move on to second reading, where we could have discussion and debate. Uh, Councilor Bressi, would you like to do second reading?
Sure, um, I would move that we give second reading to bylaw C 1260-81.
Okay, thanks very much, uh, Councilor Bressi. So, and just so everybody's a hundred percent clear, uh, now's where we can have discussion and debate. As, as I said, uh, the recommendation in the report from administration would, is, uh, is, uh, not typical. Uh, it's a recommendation to defeat, uh, s- uh, second reading. Uh, if that was the case, then the land use bylaw amendment, uh, proposal would, um, would be concluded. But, so we can open discussion and debate on the merits of the topic here. Councilor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I guess I'm struggling a little bit, excuse me, that this land was UR at one point, and there's other UR land in the area. And I, when I read through the report a couple of different times here and, and hearing it, uh, being presented, I don't feel the risks are as, as much as I originally thought when I, when I read the report. And, uh, so I would, I'd be in support of, of rezoning this to UR. I think it's, uh, I don't see a downside to the city, uh, if we did do that. And my personal feeling is if I drove by there and seen, uh, a hayfield, I think it would be better than what it is currently. It looks like, sorry for the landlord we're sitting here, but I've definitely seen garbage on this property a lot, and I think we would actually do the, the city a little bit of a favor by cleaning it up. So I will be supporting the rezoning.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Plot. Councilor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I'm also going to speak in support of this motion. I think that one of the things that we can do as a city is be supportive of our, um, of our citizens, and we're in a situation here where, after ten or eleven years, this, uh, this piece of property has potential and yet has been a burden to the developer for a while. I, I trust in the assurance that as soon as this, uh, um, piece of property becomes viable to be, uh, commercial or industrial, that, that, uh, it'll go back. And in the meantime, we, we can give, uh, this landowner a break. Uh, I believe that it would be important for us to be able to say yes to our people and to do that.
Thanks, Councilor Blackburn. Councilor Clayton.
Mayor Given, I, I'll also be in support of the motion. I, um, I, I, I struggle with the fact that administration values this land at $10,000. I also, um, feel that councils indic- has never indicated that the goal was to make taxes off of land. The goal is to make taxes off of development. So, once this opportunity comes back for a developer to actually make it into a commercial or industrial development, that's when we make the best tax base. For now, uh, it's a detriment to the developer, and it, it, uh, is something that we need, like, uh, Councilor, uh, Plot and Councilor, um, Blackburn said, it'll be a much better appearance for the subdivisions in the area, and I feel that, uh, it's the right thing to do for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Uh, well, just say that I'm going to, uh, speak in opposition to the motion for second reading. Uh, this is obviously a challenging situation, appreciate the burden that it has been in terms of cost for the owner. Um, but I, uh, reflect on the fact that it was zoned as, uh, it was no longer UR when it was bought, and so there was a recognition there that it was zoned as something. You know, if, I guess, to put it simply and appreciating the one that, that I'm not the one that has to carry the costs, but, you know, it was a bad deal, worked out poorly, and, and my understanding is that that is the challenge of being in business, uh, absolutely within council's prerogative to decide how much we want to support, uh, businesses in general or one particular business in specific. And I guess I'm also, uh, remembering that we went through a difficult, uh, couple of days of budget, where council was looking very closely at the programs that $30,000 could or couldn't support. And, uh, I'm mindful of the fact that, uh, the budget that was approved by council was less than administration's recommendation. Uh, that did come with some cuts to service, uh, reductions in service and things that we can do for a short period of time. But the erosion of the city's tax base is a very, very slippery slope. And once we start to identify that things don't have to pay as much taxes as they are, that can be a very difficult situation for us. Absolutely, council can talk about services and programs, um, but once, uh, property's been zoned, very, very odd for it to go backwards in zoning. Um, I haven't seen it before. Certainly within council's latitude, we do have this, this ability. Um, and I can appreciate the, the burden that it has been, as I said. But this is one of those issues, uh, where my preference would be to say, um, that, uh, a more appropriate way for the city to support businesses is a whole bunch of other ways. Um, and so when it comes to the erosion of the city's tax base, that's just something that I can't support. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment with respect to the motion for second reading? Councilor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate some of the comments that you've made, and, uh, um, if there are ways that we can, help mitigate the challenges that our land developer friend has, um, I'd be curious, curious to understand a little bit more about what that might be, because that might me, make me feel better about, uh, seeing this motion defeated.
Thanks, Council Blackburn. Uh, certainly at this time, I wasn't, um, proposing anything. Um, it's a pretty unique situation, as we heard acknowledged. So certainly not in a position to suggest that there's a something that we can do, but the city does do a number of things to support economic development, um, and other things. And that, that's what I was referencing in terms of support for business. The city of Grand Prairie did a retail market analysis that, uh, demonstrates how much traffic volume there is in different cities. We go to, uh, conferences to try to demonstrate, uh, the, and, and speak about what a great place Grand Prairie is to invest. Those are things that we do to help, uh, the development community and help increase the city's tax base over time. So those are the kind of things that I was referencing. Um, Councilor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, yeah, we did just go through a fairly, uh, rigorous three-day budget, where I may have got a little bit passionate a couple of times trying to keep taxes really low, so I'm counter, counterintuitive, I'm saying that I'm, I'm okay with revenue. I guess the biggest thing for me, there's an empathy piece where, um, maybe it's a bad investment and, and maybe this, this company could absorb that, but, um, it's potentially 20ish, 25,000 dollars a year they've been absorbing already. And so when I look at it, I feel like we've maybe got 10 years of value we shouldn't have got, um, personally. And so I would, I, again, I'm still gonna be supporting this, which, because I, as much as I, I don't want to see an erosion of financial, there's a part of me that also thinks that when you support your business community, you're gonna get back. And so I want to believe in that process. It's been successful for me in my career, so I, I'm, that's my, my piece on that, I guess.
Thanks, Councilor Plot. Councilor Friesen.
Thank you. I guess I have a bit of a difficult time thinking that, um, if, if we allow this amendment, I know Mr. Rossler said it's not really a, a can of worms, but I do wonder how many then, uh, developers may come forward and say, well, I'm sitting on this one, can we rezone it in the meantime? And in particular, I'm concerned that, um, the value then is dropped so low when Mr. Rossler acknowledges that even the market value at present is about $1 million on, on the land. I do agree with Mayor Given that, uh, this may be a bit of an erosion of, of tax base that is important for us to, to broaden. And we sat last week as a, as a council and acknowledged the importance of economic development and, um, diversification of tax base. And, uh, for that reason, I will not be supporting the bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Those comments, Councilor Friesen, Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I appreciate it. I appreciate the debate that's been happening already when it comes to these taxes. I am of the opinion of make this an easier place and a more pleasant place to do business, and, uh, ultimately we'll see a higher tax base for that. But something else I want to bring in is, I'm also of the belief that, in general, people should be able to do what they wish to do with their land if they're not impacting their neighbors. And I'm not seeing the, I'm, I'm not seeing the risks of impact this is gonna have. In fact, as has been mentioned, I think this is actually gonna be a plus for the neighborhood. I think it's could be a nicer thing to drive by, so that's why I'll be voting in support of this motion, 'cause I think that people should be able to do what they wish with their land. I appreciate the implications of the taxes. The end, it's about what's the role of government, and I think as much as possible, that's getting out of the way when getting out of the way won't har- harm the neighbors.
Thanks, Councilor Bressi. Councilman Haas.
Thank you, Will, Mayor Will Given. I still believe is that law is three acre land, you can still pay the rental, uh, commercial tax on it, rest of can be farmer, which will g- give us the break to the developer and help the city. But I'd like to find out if that's true, so I don't know which way I'm gonna vote. Right now, till I don't know that answer of it.
Okay, uh, understood, Man, Councilman Haas. Uh, I'm not certain if, uh, we're, if we have that information at our disposal. Otherwise, administration would have answered it before, so I, I don't think we can answer that question.
I, I have done this in the past, not in the city, but in the county and, uh, the small town in Valley View. That's what they did.
Okay, okay. Councilor Oto.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I will be supporting this decision tonight if we go ahead with second motion, and, uh, I would be encouraging the, uh, landowner to talk to environmental and, uh, see if we can get maybe, uh, a, a community garden out there on, on a certain specula- part of land. It was suggested that, uh, there's some, uh, marshland there, and maybe it's, uh, it's a possibility, but I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Oto. Um, I just, one, I don't want to belabor the point, raise the principle that I wanted to raise. The other thing, I guess, just the other, uh, aspect of that, that I think it's important to note is that, uh, ultimately in the city's budget, um, all other things being the same, this, whatever the difference is between the taxes that are paid now by this property and what they're paid in the future will be spread across the rest of the tax base. And so ultimately, because the city needs to capture a certain amount of dollars to fund its approved budget, um, and if they're not captured here, then that means that every other, uh, property taxpayer across the city will pick up that burden. That's the last aspect of that, that I wanted to raise. Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I can appreciate your comments. However, I, um, knowing some history of this developer, don't think that he would choose to sit on it for, as farmland for a long period of time if there was an opportunity to add commercial or industrial envelopment to, development to our tax base. Uh, if the developer chose to sell the land at urban reserve, there's potential for someone such as the city to buy it and, and develop it into soccer fields. I think there's opportunity for this land, and, and simply, um, this is the right thing to do for right now. This developer has invested in numerous areas in this city and has proven that he puts his money into the city and continues to put it back into the city. So I think it's simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Plot.
I guess I'd move that, uh, council give, uh, second reading.
Council Bressi's already moved it, there's no need.
Sorry.
Another motion, we're debating second reading.
Can I ask then just one thing for clarification? Is it possible for us to amend that motion that we would ask for a community garden if that's a, a will of council?
Uh, no, that isn't in the context, so this is a rezoning, so the voice in front of us tonight is urban reserve, uh, or IB, essentially. Uh, so, if there's, there's no other discussion or debate with respect to second reading, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can move on to have third reading. Council Bressi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I will move that we have third reading of, uh, sorry, of, I would move that we have third reading of bylaw C 1260-81.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. Uh, motion for third reading, there is an opportunity for discussion and debate for a third and final reading, if there's something that hasn't been said. Okay, doesn't, it doesn't look like there's anything that hasn't been said already. Uh, so I will call for the vote on third and final reading. Please vote. That motion does not carry, or sorry, does carry, excuse me. I've got my, I've got something covering half my screen, sorry. My apologies. Uh, so that concludes all of our business with, uh, land use bylaw amendment C 1260-81. We will move on to agenda item 6.2, sorry, I'm. Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, thanks for the reminder, and everybody just hold your seats. Uh, thanks very much, the city manager. I was not going off our song sheet, or I was going off our song sheet and, and missed the step that I love so much about the motion to have third and final reading here at a, a regular council meeting. We all saw that towards the end of the last council term. Um, and so, uh, with council's concurrence, we will, uh, just step back in terms of process. And Councilor Bressi, if you'd like to make a motion to have third and final reading here tonight.
I believe that's the motion I made, but if I didn't, then I'd, please so amend it.
Is, is that the motion that you made?
It was, well, the motion I would like to make is that we have third reading of bylaw C 1260-81.
Thank you, okay. A motion to have third and final reading here tonight, okay? Thank you. Thank you very much, my apologies. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? If the motion doesn't carry unanimously, uh, then third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Councilor Clayton.
The comment, I'll remind people that are on council that were here last term of how this process simply is a delay. So although you may not agree with what seems to be the eminent decision here, uh, a delay in process is simply just a delay in process, so I encourage you to vote to have third reading.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Friesen.
Um, I will vote to have third and final reason, uh, reading, and even though I oppose, um, what the outcome is going to apparently be, I, I guess I'd like it on record that, um, I would have been perhaps more sympathetic had the developer come forward with intent.
Sorry, Council Friesen, I'll actually, you can actually, uh, register that if you'd like, the motion to have third and final reading, the sort of debatable matters are the merits of having third and final reading.
Uh, no, no debate on that, that's fine.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Thank you very much for that catch, administration. Uh, so we'll have them, uh, So we'll have them vote on having third and final reading here tonight. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would I would vote that we give third reading to bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighty-one.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. You would move. You can vote after. You get to move it first and then we'll vote. I'm glad to see that I'm not the only one making slight errors tonight. Thank you for that. That was that was nice team team support there.
Support by Mayor.
Okay, so now we have a motion for third and final reading. Was there anybody who wished to make any comments? Now would be the time to make any comments on the subject matter of the the third and final reading. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. As as I was going to say, I would have preferred perhaps had the developer come forward with intent to or the proposal for social use on on this land that would have made a big difference for me. I think if we're going to, you know, allow this reduction in the income of the city and and spread that that lower income to the city across the rest of the tax base, then a trade off would have been really nice to have had. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Counselor Friesen. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Up until now, I haven't really gotten into the debate, but I'll tell you what sort of sealed my no vote, and I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind. But something that councils should be mindful of moving forward in in the future, if we do get any of these other requests. What really tipped me to the no side was that the land was zoned in two thousand and one and as the mayor stated, and as was also stated by the developer's purchase in two thousand and six, under the understanding that it was already zoned as IB. So the developers knew what they were getting into when they purchased this land. They knew what the tax rate was going to be. And yes, our assessments have risen over time. But this is a slippery slope for zoned lands that are already existing in the city of Grand Prairie. There's no denying that. This tonight, as it passes, may set a precedent for more delegations coming forward and asking us to do the same thing with their development. And in that sense, we'd be seeing a complete reduction of our overall tax assessment base and hence our revenues. So if we want to be mindful of our revenues, these types of decisions, in my opinion, need to come few and far between. And when I make a purchase, I know what I'm buying and I know what risks are associated with it. At the end of the day, we can't allow one bad decision to affect the rest of our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I get the concern about pressing with this. At the same time, I've driven by it past the land and I've seen the dumping happening on it and I've and I've dealt with poplars popping up on areas that I've been responsible for. I think there's clear reasons to want to do something different with this land. In my mind, I would be very comfortable denying an application that was just about mitigating a tax base that didn't have that wasn't a clear solution to a clear problem. So that's why I'll be voting in support of this motion. I'd be very comfortable voting against similar motions in the future.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll call for the vote on third and final reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And so that actually concludes all the business related to this. Now we can move on to item six point two. We'll get into a regular flow of this, these things, I promise, I promise. So I would call to order the public hearing for land use bylaw amendment C twelve sixty dash eighty-two with respect to the Hillside Area Revitalization Plan overlay. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Drosh.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the proposed bylaw is an amendment to the land use bylaw to include the Hillside Area Redevelopment Plan overlay district. The overlay district will apply to an area of approximately this wrong screen. Thank you. Pardon me. We just we have a map. So the impacted area is approximately ninety hectares and is to the northeast of the city downtown, bounded by Hundred Avenue to the south, one oh eight avenue to the north, Ninety Second Street to the east and Resources Road to the west. The very large building that you can see on the east there, excuse me, on the western side is Queen Elizabeth II Hospital. Now, the overlay is a result of the Hillside ARP project, which council adopted on September twenty fifth, twenty seventeen. The regulations that are included in this overlay district are all policies within that bylaw. And the creation of an overlay district was listed in the implementation steps of that bylaw as well. The reason for this amendment is because the ARP is a high level document that proposes future land uses and general policies. But the specific rules governing development are held within the land use bylaw. So in order to adequately enforce the policies contained in the ARP, we need to include this overlay district within the land use bylaw. So the contents of the overlay district can be divided into three categories. The first is design standards. The second is character controls and the third is requirements for specific land use categories. So the design standards include features that impact the aesthetic appearance of the site. So this is controls such as requiring the facade incorporate three different materials or treatments, preventing the use of very similar designs for building within a small area, requiring a minimum window to wall ratio, requiring that the building be street oriented and various other aesthetic requirements that help the buildings better suit the character of the neighborhood. Now, we'll lead, we'll explain the remainder.
So the second item is about the character control, which could be thought of as an extension of the development standards or the site standards applicable for each land use district. So but what they do is a kind of more restrictive. For example, there will be more parking requirement for three dwelling units and four dwelling units in the neighborhood. There will be a wider side yard for three dwelling units and four dwelling units. And there would be minimum landscaping in the front yard, which we don't have it now. Like the way we have it now, generally speaking, it's minimum landscaping for the entire site. So some people might have the landscaping in the backyard and you might end up with an empty front yard, just either paved or gavel. So the third component of the overlay we're talking about has to do with specific uses in the future. And this is dependent on realizing the vision by applying for zoning amendment in the future in compliance with the vision. So there will be requirements for multifamily along one oh eight avenue for a section of it in case of redevelopment and rezoning. There would be requirement for other levels to be stepped back in the future, especially along one hundred avenue. And also some areas will there will be requirement for vehicular access to be from the back lane. And just we have like some concept that we already had in the ARP, but just as it kind of make it easier for you to follow what we're talking about in terms of the overlay. So the one on the left hand side, this is what we mean by old housing along a section of one oh eight avenue in the future. So as you see, there wouldn't be parking in the front. And the one to the right hand side is a vision for one oh eight avenue for either an apartment building or a mixed use building that also doesn't have a front yard here. So to establish more connection to one oh eight avenue. So just to conclude, administration, sorry, based on what we said, this there's nothing new being added to the overlay. It's all existing policies in the ARP that was adopted back on September twenty fifth by council. And they were developed during the ARP to address a lot of the concerns we have heard from the public about new development that has been happening over the last ten years or so. And that's why administration recommends that the bylaw of the overlay be given the readings tonight. Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Alec Berry. Any questions for administration at this stage? Again, remembering we have another opportunity later on. I don't see anybody in the queue for questions, so we'll ask if there's anybody here in support of the proposed land use bylaw amendment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in support of the proposed land use bylaw amendment? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposed land use bylaw amendment. Someone here to speak in opposition to the proposed land use bylaw amendment? And I'll ask one final time if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed land use bylaw amendment to apply the Hillside Area Revitalization Plan overlay. I don't see anybody coming forward, so I will ask one last time if there are any questions for administration. Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. And I see Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-two being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Motion for first reading. We have no discussion and debate on first reading, so I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-two.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor Platt.
Sorry, I tried to ring her. It just wasn't working. I just had a couple of questions to to administration about it. I think it's a great plan. While we see supporting it. Just under four point three point one for the building to exceed two stories, the upper floor. I'm just wondering if we're getting a little bit too prescriptive would be my only maybe worry on this of what you could do for building design. And if there if there's maybe a little bit more reason of why we got as prescriptive here as we did.
Mr. Drosh. And and sorry, Mr. Drosh, before answering, and this is, you know, we're starting a new council term. I just remind council that we have the opportunity to ask questions of administration during the presentation submission portion, and the intent there broadly is so that no new information is introduced af- you know, when we're getting into the debating the the readings. So we try to limit questions during the
Sorry, and my apologies.
No, no, that's fine. No, no problem. No problem. It wouldn't be the first time. Wouldn't be the first time. Mr. Drosh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a very common design control implemented in many cities. And it's for pedestrian centered design. So essentially stepping the building back at upper upper levels allows sunlight to reach the sidewalks. It also makes larger buildings less overbearing to adjacent properties as well as people experience it from the street. So it is a very common design standard and we don't feel that it is going beyond the scope of this project.
Okay. And then under four point three point six, it says buildings should, so it's not a shell, but have a designated area on site to accommodate snow storage. Just wondering if if that could potentially cause challenges for some smaller lots to try to actually put a structure on them. Is there any is there any thoughts around that?
Mr. Drosh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is why we use the wording should. We are very careful in distinguishing between requirements where we say shall and should where it is a recommendation where we acknowledge that there are constraints to various sites that may not make this possible. However, we want to include it so that people designing in this area are aware of the design considerations we're expecting.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Platt. Thanks, Mr. Drosh. Any further discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now we'll look for a motion to have third and final reading. I'll say it with emphasis just so I don't forget. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bill. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-two.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So as we've seen, and as everybody knows by well now, this motion must pass unanimously in order for us to move on to third and final reading here tonight. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of moving on to third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash eighty-two.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of the Hillside Area Revitalization Plan overlay? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That concludes all of our business for this public hearing. We'll move on to item six point three. Public hearing for land use bylaw amendment C twelve sixty dash eighty-three residential transition to medium density residential. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. The final public hearing for tonight is an application to rezone land in the South Avondale neighborhood from residential transition to medium density residential. The subject property is located one block north of downtown at one zero one one two one hundred and third avenue. The property fronts directly onto a public transit route, has unobstructed sidewalk access and is within a comfortable walking distance to the Montrose Cultural Center, Musquesee Park and various downtown amenities. The image on screen shows adjacent land uses in proximity to the subject property. As is evident on screen, the subject property is surrounded by a wide variety of housing options. These housing options range from single detached houses to duplexes to even larger style apartment dwellings. Further to this, the South Avondale neighborhood is a neighborhood that is not necessarily dominated by a certain land use zone. Although the neighborhood is primarily residential, the neighborhood has a diverse mixture of residential transition, medium density residential and public service zoning. This image, which was taken from the city's land use bylaw, shows the wide variety of zoning that already exists in South Avondale. By rezoning the subject property to medium density residential, the city will not be introducing a foreign zone into the neighborhood as multiple pockets of RM zoning are already existent throughout the South Avondale neighborhood. This image shows the extent to which RM zoning is already present in the neighborhood. For these reasons, administration is confident that rezoning the subject property to RM is appropriate from an adjacent land use perspective. In addition to adjacent land uses, there are two primary planning documents that guide future land use decisions for the subject property. The first of these plans, being the city's municipal development plan, is the broad overarching planning document that applies to every parcel in the city. The municipal development plan, otherwise referred to as the MDP, establishes residential development for the subject property. Following the city's municipal development plan is the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan. The South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan, otherwise known as the SARP, only applies to parcels located within South Avondale. The point of the SARP is to guide redevelopment proposals in South Avondale with more detail than the MDP can provide. Most notably, the SARP establishes the future use of the subject property to be medium density residential development. For these reasons, administration is confident that rezoning the subject property to RM is consistent with the city's municipal development plan and the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan. Regarding density provisions, the existing residential transition zone allows the applicant to develop up to eight units on a discretionary basis. However, the residential transition zone is fairly flexible with permitted uses that can receive a development permit, making this zone less prescriptive and less predictable. The proposed rezoning to medium density residential will allow the applicant to develop up to ten units on the site. However, the medium density residential zone is in a way less flexible with the permitted uses that can receive a development permit, making this zone more prescriptive and more predictable. For these reasons, administration is confident that rezoning the subject property to RM will not dramatically increase the development rates of the property and will, in a way, be more predictable for the city. Regarding public consultation, administration circulated this application to property owners within a sixty meter radius of the property. The applicant posted one public hearing sign on the property and advertised the application twice in the Daily Herald Tribune. Administration did not receive any responses from the public regarding the proposed rezoning. However, it has come to my attention prior to tonight that there is an applicant or a member of the public here to express certain concerns. So to summarize, the applicant is requesting that council vote in favor of rezoning the subject property from residential transition to medium density residential. Because the proposed rezoning is compatible with adjacent land uses, is consistent with the city's planning policies and will not dramatically increase the density of the property, administration supports the proposed rezoning to medium density residential. For these reasons, administration recommends that council give land use bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighty-three all three readings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for administration at this stage? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you very much for the report. I'm just a little confused. At the back of the report here, there's a letter that's coming from, I'm assuming, the the landowner or the developer. At the back of the report here, there's a letter that's coming from, I'm assuming, the landowner, the developer, Visionary Concepts. But their letter says the rezoning request is from RM to RT, and we're talking about RT to RM. Is that just a confusion?
Through the mayor, yes, that is a typo. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Theeson. I had a question. In the presentation, you stated that the RM zoning is more predictable. Do you specify in the ways that it's more predictable than the RT zoning?
Certainly. So I've provided an additional slide here that shows, it compares the residential transition zone in the bylaw with the medium-density residential zone. And the reason behind, I tried to make it as big as I could to fit on one side, but the reason for saying that it's more predictable is because there are, in a way, less permitted uses, which means that when the applicant makes a proposal to the city for a development, there's there's less, the, what they'll propose isn't as broad with RM as it is with RT. So in a way, it's more predictable for what we could receive from them.
Okay. And can you just speak, seeing that up there, I see that multi-attached dwelling is on both. And so would the RM district essentially allow for a, like a walk-up sort of row housing style? And is that, can you just make the distinction, what's the distinction between the types of multi-attached dwelling?
In, so the multi-attached dwelling for the RT zone allows up to four units. But in the RM zone, the multi-attached dwelling doesn't have a unit count on it. So that multi-attached would have, the unit count would be determined based on the size of the property. So I'll direct your attention to the top of the RM zone where the mouse is showing. So this is where the this is where the density for RM zoning is achieved. So basically, the applicant is allowed 94 units per hectare. And based on the property size, which is 0.11 hectares, that would be, it equates to 10 units. So the applicant could have 10 units as a multi-attached dwelling.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions for administration at this point. Seeing none, then we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This would be an opportunity for people to come forward and speak to this. If there's anybody here this evening to speak in support of this proposed rezoning, I would call them forward. If you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself to council, sir. Mr. Platt, welcome.
I would be the owner with my wife of the property. And so, first of all, the first time we've been here, I've been looking at how council proceeds with this. I've been looking at the package that was put together for it, very in-depth, I have to be honest. And when we purchased the land, what we did was we went down to the city and we just looked and said, you know, what are options in this? So in those discussions, it came up to say that realistically, the city is looking at trying to move more and more of this area into into the new zoning, which is RT, and it was me that had them backwards. So hopefully, I'm getting it right right now. So that's what we did. Instead of trying to present something to development services and to planning and et cetera, you know, we looked at saying, where does the city want to go? And they said, this is what we would, you know, we're looking at doing to this whole area. So we thought, well, then why would we not try to proceed with that? Therefore, once, you know, passed, then we would be able to go in and say, okay, well, now what fits on the property? Whereas if we're going in prior to, and it's really potentially maybe not where the city wants to go, do we have an avenue now of finding out, saying, well, we prefer that you have this? So that's the reason behind us looking to say that, you know, we're looking for support in this area.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Platt. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in or anybody waving their hands at me. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, Councilman Minhaas, did you have a question? Okay, well, we will, so we'll give anybody else that's here an opportunity to speak. And then we'll have one last round of questions for administration, and then we'll close the public hearing, then we get on to business arising. So is there anybody else here to speak, who wishes to speak to this proposed amendment? Transition, change from residential transition to medium-density residential? Is there anybody else here this evening that wished to speak to the subject matter of this public hearing? If there was anybody else that wished to speak in opposition or in support, now would be the time to do that. Once, if you're, yes, ma'am, if you're here to speak to this, you're more than welcome to come down, come and join us. And all we ask is that you just introduce yourself so that our recording secretary can get your name. And welcome. Please have a seat.
Thank you. Excuse me, I've never done this before, so I'm a little bit nervous.
It's okay.
My name is Louisa Heine, and I live at 1012-103rd Avenue, which is across from the proposed buildings going up. My husband and I have been living there since 1979. And when I heard about this, it kind of makes me nervous. Simply because now with accepted use of drugs, it's going to be legalized. So I'm concerned about that, what kind of people will be living there. Secondly, there'll be more traffic. And so it's kind of makes me nervous to stay in the neighborhood.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. You've done well. You can take a breath.
So like I said, it's making me nervous to stay there because with the legalization of drugs and different things, it just, I don't feel comfortable anymore. So thank you for hearing me.
Absolutely. And so we do offer that opportunity if any council members have any questions for, just before we leave, I'll just ask, does council have any questions for our delegation? I don't see anybody has any questions for you. Thank you very much for having the courage to come up.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. One last opportunity for council. If you have any questions for our administration. Council, any questions for administration before we close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising. Here's where we would seek a motion for first reading. Counselor Minhaas.
That I counsel move, give the first reading to bylaw C-1260-83, amended to land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So as with the previous ones, no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas, you can continue on with second reading if you wish.
I'll move the second reading bylaws C-1260-83.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So we can have discussion and debate on second reading. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody in the queue, I'll just say that I'm in support of the motion to move to second reading, and that will be in support of the rezoning. And essentially, I'm comfortable that it will have a very moderate or negligible impact on the neighborhood, considering that it is the same kind of zoning as is immediately next door, the apartment building, that is Grand Spirit Seniors Apartment Building, and a number of other properties in the neighborhood. So I don't foresee that the character of the residence of the building would be significantly different than any other areas in the community. And if nothing else, I would imagine in a brand-new property, the owners would either be looking to sell to people that had the means to buy those properties or to rent to people that had the means to rent a relatively new property. And so if anything, I think it will be an enhancement into the neighborhood. I don't see anybody else in the queue to speak. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge Mrs. Heine that I've heard what you've said. I will be supporting this motion, though I think what this does is increase what is allowable there anyway by only two units. And given that it is consistent with the direction in that neighborhood, I think it's a good, a good way to go, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for those comments, Counselor Friesen. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas, we can have a motion to have third and final reading? You'll just have to get your, oh, gotcha.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mayor Bill Given. Have, that I asked council to have a third reading bylaw C-1260-83 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. That motion's open for discussion or debate as to whether or not to have third and final reading. Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, and so we can have third and final reading, Counselor Minhaas.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I give, council give the third reading bylaws C-1260-83, being amended to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of this land use bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That concludes all of our business with this land use bylaw amendment. And in fact, concludes all of our public hearing business. We have no items of unfinished business this evening, and so that would take us to item 8.1 under reports. A report with respect to the 2018 operating capital budget deliberations, a summary, and I will look to our city manager. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I won't go through the report. It is really content that you've already seen in the official minutes from the meeting. This was just a report that administration will be using to go through and prepare the budget that you'll see in December.
Very much, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate that. And it's always nice to know, it's always nice to have an opportunity to have administration put pen to paper to demonstrate that they heard what council said and that they heard it accurately, just in case there was anything where council may have not made our intent clear, but certainly appreciate that. And would look for a motion to receive that report for information. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So moved.
Thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and would take us into committee business, starting with 9.1, Community Living Committee from Tuesday, November 7th. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee held Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions, corrections that we need to make to the minutes before we adopt them or receive them? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. If everyone will bear with me here, I have a fairly lengthy motion to read, and then I will speak to that. So in saying that, I would move that council award $12,607 to the Neighborhood Enhancement Matching Grants for Signature Falls Neighborhood Association in the amount of $5,000 for Phase 1 of a multi-use, multi-seasonal play surface at their park at 70th Avenue. Also, for Hillside Neighborhood Association to receive $1,500 for a school partnership with Hillside Elementary to install four planters for seasonal planting with the students. Also, Cobblestone and Riverstone Neighborhood Association in the amount of $975 for a bike rack in Archie Harvey Park. This also includes Swan Haven Neighborhood Association's $3,127 ask for a banner project to welcome visitors and residents to the community. And finally, for the Mountview Neighborhood Association in the amount of $2,000 for a picnic table in Perky McCullough Park, where they hold their association events. Speaking to this motion, the Neighborhood Association Matching Grant Program is an annual program that the city undertakes to ensure that we're giving a little bit of financial incentive to our neighborhood associations in the means of matching, whether that be other financial contributions or volunteer hours put into a project, so that they can help create the area that they want to live in, in their neighborhood. So it's an excellent program. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending, I guess, how you look at it, this year, this program was undersubscribed, and we have money going back into the overall budget, as this was our last application process coming forward. So thank you, council.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on the motion as presented? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Theeson, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Not much else really happened. We had a couple of presentations in the delegations, one from Spinal Cord injury Alberta, the other one from Grand Prairie and Area Safe Communities. But I would like to note that this was our council's first committee meeting, and it was the Community Living Committee meeting. And in so saying that, we had our director, Koji Miyagi, and his team representing various departments throughout the city that presented the community living, I guess, purpose and what we come to expect from each department that is held underneath that portfolio. So it's a great presentation, and I hope that our new counselors learned a lot. I know I learned a little for what I didn't already know. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. We'll move on to item 9.2, the Corporate Services Committee meeting from November 7th. Our second committee meeting of this council term. I mean, it's not bad. Counselor Theeson, or sorry, Counselor O'Toole, if you want to ring in? Or you've got it?
I'm good to go here if you're done talking. There we go. Thank you very much, Mayor Gil, Mayor Bill.
Do you want to start talking?
Must be something in the oxygen tonight. I don't know. I move the council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
I've got two motions that I'll bring forward. 9.2.1, the Borrowing Bylaw C-1362, renovations to the Bear Creek Outdoor Pool. And I recommend that council give first reading to the Borrowing Bylaw C-1362, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I will look for a vote on first reading, just in terms of process, council. This is a first reading for borrowing. The borrowing can actually happen until all three readings of the borrowing bylaw have been passed. And so this essentially allows administration the opportunity to start that process. And the second and third reading of the borrowing bylaw would come to council closer to the time when the borrowing actually needs to take place. So nobody's being borrowed at this stage. It's just essentially the process to get that paperwork written up. And then as the year progresses, when administration needs those funds, then they would come back to council with the second and third reading. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you.
The second motion I'm going to make is the council give first reading to Borrowing Bylaw C-1363, as presented. It is the CKC Westfield Grand Stand Construction. And as Mayor Given had just mentioned earlier, this is just the start of the process. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, this was the first meeting of the Corporate Services Committee for this term. And we did have one discussion on the election in the post-modem. And it was basically what are the challenges and the successes of the last election and municipal election? And committee will request a feedback from the administration to look into that just a little bit more thorough. I know they had some concerns, and we had some concerns, and we're just going to put it all together, and we'll have a meeting over it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We'll move on to item 9.3, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting from Tuesday, November 14th. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council accept the minutes as presented for the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 14th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The first item up for discussion tonight, it was moved, and committee recommend council to approve the request to extend the period for subdivision endorsement for Z14-0019 to the extended date of July 31st, 2018.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Anyone for discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton.
The next motion for tonight, I would move that committee recommend council, or sorry, committee recommended council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration for a period of one year to October 7th, 2018, for subdivision Z15-0010.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. And just to be precise, I know you're just sort of going for the minutes of the meeting, but so here, of course, it's council approve, the committee recommended to us, and so we are the ones approving. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you.
Mayor Given, I would ask that somebody else is prepared to make the next motion. Thank you.
Is there one of Counselor Clayton's colleagues that would like to make the subsequent motion? Counselor Friesen.
So I would like to move that council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration to July thirtieth, 2018 for subdivision Z fourteen zero zero two five. That's in Valley.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Thanks for stepping in. Counselor Clayton.
Given, I would encourage council to defeat this motion. At discussion at the level, committee level, the discussion was from administration, what stages hadn't been done in regards to this process, excuse me. And as the applicant said today, they have now completed the necessary paperwork, in essence, that administration wanted to be seen in order to allow a one-year extension. So therefore, administration asked for things to be done. They have now been completed, and now we can discuss whether or not a one-year extension is possible. So therefore, I encourage council to defeat this motion. Thank you.
We'll just clarify, I think Counselor Clayton, your intent may be to be more supportive than the motion reflects at committee. Sure. So if it's, I'm not certain if the motion being defeated, if that, if a subsequent motion could come up, I'll just look to our Legislative Service Manager. I think amending may be preferable here.
The motion that is on the floor is that council approve the request for a time extension.
So if council vote, if that motion was defeated, that would mean that council, in essence, did not approve the time extension? Sure, Counselor Clayton, go ahead. You'll have to turn your microphone on.
Move to amend that council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision. I think it takes us to January, yeah, if I recall, January nineteenth, 2000, January thirtieth, 2019. Maybe administration can help me with where that puts one year.
I believe that was the case. January thirtieth, 2019.
Two thousand and nineteen. So in speaking to that motion, as I mentioned, the documentation that administration was looking for when it originally come has now been completed. At the time, the recommendation from, or the discussion from administration, that was six months based on the fact that some of the required documents hadn't been completed. They have now been completed, and therefore, the one-year extension should be possible. And I encourage council to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Open for discussion or debate on the amendment. I would just, I won't belabor the point, but I would draw to council's attention that this is actually significantly different than the last two extensions that were granted. This is actually a time extension for registration. Administration identified that the things that were done to get endorsement of the subdivision had been completed. And so that, so that stage had been handled. This is, from my understanding of how it was described at the committee, is essentially an extension of time to allow the developer to get the paperwork submitted and approved by the province. So it's not about the developer having to do anything to meet the city's sort of requirements. That's all been handled and is clear. This is basically simply to allow the property owner time to figure out how the federal income tax changes will change their tax planning. So, so the other ones, though, are where, are somewhat different. I don't see anybody else in the queue on Counselor Clayton's amendment. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So we'll move on to Counselor Friesen's motion as amended. Any discussion or debate on that motion? And seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, I think you've got a couple, or sorry, a couple other pieces of business.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the extension of year two of a bulk highway salt tender T dash seventy dash five four six dash seventeen to NCS Minerals Limited in the amount of $321,624 excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Open for discussion or debate. Any discussion or debate on this motion? It's a lot of salt. It's not table salt. Highway salt.
Might not need it. Just keeps snowing.
Just keeps snowing. I don't see any other discussion or debates, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Seems as though we're getting a slippery slope there with our discussion, so I thought I would do it before we went off-road. Counselor Clayton.
So before we are subjected to more humor from the mayor, I will finish my last, my last motion for this evening. I recommend council allocate $650,000 to the Transportation System Levy Reserve to fund geometric improvements at the intersection of 132nd Avenue and 102nd Street.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it was also the first meeting of the Infrastructure and Protective Services. For anybody watching tonight, from past council, it was a combination of community growth and some of community safety. And so there was a quite lengthy introduction from administration. Thank you to administration for all the work that was put forward. It's a great big portfolio, and there was a lot of information to be digested there. So I appreciate the time and effort that was put into the introduction. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. I don't believe we had any items correspondence. We did have two delegations. One, Mr. Wong, his was dealt with under, under business in their council package, but the presentation from Ms. Charbonneau would be something that we could receive for information. Counselor Thiessen?
So move to Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So essentially, there's no action arising, but we sort of acknowledge that council's received that presentation. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We have no notices of motion this evening, and so we move into council member reports. This is an opportunity for council members to report on the activities at the agencies, boards, and commissions that they represent the city of Grand Prairie on. There were three council members, I think, that let me know ahead of time that they had presentation, or sorry, presentation. You're not expected to do a presentation, updates, let's say. And we'll start first with Counselor Palat and the Downtown BRZ.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, I attended the special meeting for the, with the Board of Directors on November the eighth. This group will be very happy that we've decided to go ahead with Phase Three now, and it'll be nice to go, I believe, tomorrow. We have another meeting to have a chat with them. Also in attendance was our city manager, Bob Nickley, and there was a lot of discussion, and I believe Bob captured it very well, all the recommendations or concerns that this group brought forward. So I think we're pretty well-covered here, and it's, I'm looking forward to working with this group continuing forward.
Thanks very much, Counselor Platt. Counselor Clayton, Community Futures.
Mayor Given, just a brief report. The Community Futures Group, which is represented from elected officials from surrounding municipalities, as well as local business people, had their first meeting, a bit of an orientation for those of us who were new. At that meeting, we didn't have any decisions or discussions on any current applications for funding. However, it was a good overview, and I look forward to reporting more at a future time. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Friesen, you had Grand Prairie Sports Council.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So of all of the committees and councils that I was given, I would have to say this is the one I knew the least about. More of a arts sir than a sports sir I am. So it was really exciting to get to know Karna and the board at the sport council. I met with them three times in two days. And it's amazing to me what that organization can do with exactly one employee. And they do that also, not only through sheer brute force, but leveraging with other organizations as well. And I was pleased to attend the signing of the memorandum of understanding between the sport council and the Volunteer Services Bureau on the, on November fourteenth. Counselor Thiessen was there as well. And I think that's just the kind of community, agency, collaboration and partnership that is very exciting to see. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. And back to Counselor Clayton for Nighthawk.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Also had the first meeting of the Nighthawk Board. It was nice to be back. I had served on that committee for the first two years of my last term. And so some familiar faces, not everyone. The ski hill opened this past weekend for a sort of reduced schedule, which was exciting news to discuss that night. It opened Saturday and Sunday, and they're continuing to make snow as it stays cold. And the committee seems to be headed in a great direction. They've received some funding from the federal government, and they've done some great fundraising. Their new deck addition is done, and last season, they revealed an extension on their sort of rental area. So they're continuing to grow and enhance that facility. They're now getting into the planning stages of what the future looks like for the land, for the facility, et cetera. And those meetings will actually begin this week while I'm away. But the committee is very aggressive in regards to growing that and adding more value and more of a facility to the region. So I look forward to working with them. And I remind everybody, if you're a skier, or a tuber, or just like to go out for a good Sunday brunch, the ski hill will open, is now open, and will have its regular operating hours coming shortly. But for this coming weekend, it's open Saturday and Sunday as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. And we'll move on to council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. The last two weeks have been fairly busy. Obviously, we've had budget and a new orientation of council, as well as being as the kickoff, I got to be the receiver on the deputy mayor duties for the first six weeks of this council term. So it's been great serving as deputy mayor, and definitely kept my schedule about as busy as running in an election. But there's two events that I'm just going to specifically highlight. They were highlights for me over the last two weeks. The first happened on November seventh, where many members of council, I will list them off, Counselors Friesen, Palat, O'Toole, and Bressi were with me at the GP Live Theater for a screen viewing event of a documentary that was hosted by United Way and HIV North in conjunction. And the documentary is called Us and Them, and it took a good broad look into chronic and episodic homelessness, as well as addictions and the effects of the opioid crisis. What followed after that documentary was a panel of three members that I had the opportunity to sit on, to speak on behalf of council as to what we're doing about the opioid crisis, chronic and episodic homelessness, among other topics, including systemic racism. Needless to say, a lot of the questions that came from the audience and even from the panelists were quite challenging. And after counseling with my councillors afterwards, I think it was pretty unanimous. They said, better you than me. I'm happy you're the guy sitting on that panel. So thanks for the support, everyone, and thanks for having me. It was a great event and a great to raise awareness to the, to the general public as to how important these issues are to tackle in our community. Finally, on November eleventh, I had the opportunity as deputy mayor to go to the Senetaph for the first time ever and drop the wreath on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie. Normally, I stick to Legion events as all my grandparents are Legion members, lifetime Legion members, so it's nice to go there and see friends and family. But this is a nice touch. Coming to the Senetaph, there was about, I'd say, 350 to 400 people in attendance. I was also joined by Counselors O'Toole and Friesen, who helped me drop the wreath, because I figured we're all here. We might as well drop it all together and do that as a team. But great, excellent service. The weather was nice and kind. The snow was a good touch. And then afterwards, I went off with the group to the Army Navy Club for some sandwiches and soup, and also take a look at the Afghanistan War Memorial, which, you know, my in-law from out of town thought it was a most beautiful, most beautiful structure for a memorial, and she'd never seen anything like it. So it was good to hear that comment from an out-of-towner, and happy to be a part of all the events I took part in the past two weeks.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Community Living and Corporate Services orientations and found them to be very, very useful. And although I'm not on those committees, it was useful to learn something about them. So I appreciate administration's work in preparing those orientations. I had to be out of town and therefore missed my first Infrastructure and Protective Services meeting. I did meet with Director Galanti ahead of time, and he was very kind to give me the orientation and a look at the issues that were being dealt with by that, that committee. So again, I appreciate the support, even though I had to be away. The only other thing that I will mention is that my attendance at the Métis Flag Raising Ceremony was enjoyable. I found it an uplifting event and something that I'm really glad to see that the city supports the Métis community. And that's all I have for today.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Palat.
Yeah, back to, Chris did a really good job on behalf of the city at that event. I definitely was one guy that was ducking down, hoping they wouldn't ask me, because that's not, not an area I'm really up to speed on yet. Really, really busy last couple of weeks, a lot around budget and getting our head around that. So I took the time to go to one event that was more of a, on a funner, lighter side, I guess, literally lighter, the Northern Spirit Light Show. I believe Counselor Bressi, Counselor O'Toole, and Counselor Friesen at that one as well. What was really special about that one for me is during the campaigning and the last little while, I haven't seen my family as much as I'd like. And I had an opportunity to take my eight-year-old daughter, and I thought it was really cool to be able to have her be involved. And it's really interesting, the questions that are coming from my kids now, because they're starting to understand, you know, what, why is dad gone all the time? So it was really special to me to be able to bring my daughter on this, and something I'm looking forward to doing more in the future. And they did a fantastic job yet again. And I think they're going to have a phenomenal year there this year. So it was lots of fun.
That's Counselor Palat. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. I just realized my mic's been active this whole time.
Good thing you didn't say anything untoward.
I know. Wasn't leaning over and whispering. Likewise, a busy couple of weeks for sure with Remembrance Day's activities. I was delighted to go to Roy Bickle School and join in their assembly and lay a wreath on behalf of the city. And then on Remembrance Day, attended just back-to-back-to-back-to-back events from the Senetaph to Annavets, oh, starting with Trinity's Community Breakfast, and then over to the Legion. A highlight of my couple of weeks really was getting to know the sport council. And I am on the board of the Volunteer Services Bureau as well, so to be there for that memorandum of understanding, which really is a cross-referral of a couple of organizations that really are doing the same thing for different nonprofit focuses. And so that was very nice to do. Some fun things as well, like the Northern Spirit Light Show and the Festival of Trees Gala the other night, too. Oh, there's one more thing. Oh, I also attended the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers. They presented to, at GPRC to students. And I don't know a ton about petroleum production and, and pipelines. This was the production side or the extraction side of things, but it was exciting to see the encouragement that they had for students for future in, in jobs in our region and our strength, of course, in natural gas between Montney and Duvernay, being so close. So that was, that was an interesting and a bit of a stretch for me. Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Menhoss.
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I went to, oh, I don't know, the United Way's Second Annual Art Show and Auction, and that was very good. Looked quite a few people show up there. And then we went to Tree Festival at the hospital fundraising. And then, yeah, Wild Rose Restaurant. Junus cut the ribbon there. So that was a fun time. And today was the kid free one hour in Eastlake Center. There was lots of kid and family came there. That was enjoyable to talk into some people. That's about it. Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Counselor Menhoss. Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, some of the Mayor Given, some of the events have already been mentioned, so I won't bring them up again. But two things I wanted to mention, one, I guess, has already been mentioned, but the Pembina Pipeline Grand Opening and their new office. I know the mayor brought greetings and it's a great new facility and a nice addition to city inland as we sort of develop to the west. It's a, it's a great sort of addition out there. So congratulations to them. I did want to just touch base a little bit more on the GP Hospital Foundation Festival of Trees. It was the twenty-ninth annual festival, well-attended, sold out again. And the numbers were big. And they're going to announce them this week, but if they didn't, already late today. But they're doing significant money to fundraise for that hospital. So it was nice to see the dollars up from the past and it's sort of an indication, hopefully, that things are coming around, especially for the nonprofits that are trying to organize and fundraise out there. And the rest of my events were already mentioned, so thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Did a number of events. I just want to touch on one that was kind of a somber event, but very interesting, was the Life After Dark book launch. Suzanne Stigmeyer had spent the last couple of years traveling all over Canada, talking to survivors of suicide. And I happen to know a few of the people that are in the book. And some people I didn't even realize they were having some concerns, close friends of mine, actually. But on a different note, I've been on the International Day of Peoples with Disabilities Committee for the last few years. And we're going to have the IDPA Award Ceremony on December first. I know some council members had already replied and they will be there. It'll be at the evening, at five-thirty till about nine o'clock at the Paradise Inn. And we've got two two awards to be presented by the Alberta Premier's Council on the Status of Persons with Disabilities and the Grand Prairie Planning Committee for the IDPA. So we've got two keynote speakers and it'll be a very eventful day. And thank you. Hope they can make it.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Bressi?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate it. I'm learning it's challenging being on this end of the roundtable. It's been mentioned a couple of times, but it was, really was impactful, impactful event. So I will mention the Us and Them documentary. I just saw United Way and HIV North, and I thought those are two organizations that wanted support, didn't know what the event was, and all of a sudden I find myself crying in a movie. And it was a great movie. I'll spare you the URL, but I did write a blog post about it if you guys want to check it out. And the theme of my last couple of weeks was not knowing what I was getting into. So today, my kids heard that there were bouncy castles at the East Link Center. And so I went to the Children's Festival there. And what was a really great surprise was there was about thirty agencies, everything from city departments to nonprofit organizations to private enterprises that are serving the kids in our community. It was really fun seeing the range of services that are available to our next generation here in town. So it was fun getting some helium balloons, getting some treats, playing some games and seeing how much care there is for kids in this community.
Thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. Just to ease your mind, we'll rotate that every once in a while and sort of, sort of spur of the moment, I'll sort of make eye contact with the council member, go, you ready to start? Want to start the roundtable? So everybody should get a turn. And with that, I hope that you let your kids have some of the balloons and the treats.
All minor, and it's Councilor O'Toole, and he can attest that I was pushing him out of the way to get the bouncing.
Well, thanks, thanks very much, Councilor Bressi, for the update. I'll try and cover just a couple of items where there were no other council members in attendance. But first, before I do that, the Pembina Pipeline Grand Opening. Just wanted to highlight for council and for the community that this is a building that was built to replace Pembina's old building because they were running out of space. But this one has space for three hundred employees. The interesting thing about that is that they only have a hundred and fifty here. So I think it really speaks to their confidence in the region, their business plan to grow in our region. And I think that that's really good news for our community. So aside from just the fact that there's another physical structure that exists that's paying property taxes, which is good, it shows that there's a lot of confidence in the Grand Prairie region, and I think that that's a great thing. On Wednesday, the eighth, I had an opportunity to speak at the Probus Club. This is a new club in the Grand Prairie area. It's a similar family as Rotary Clubs, but it is for active senior adults. I'm not sure if there's a better term for that. Retired and semi-retired adults. Typically, we'll have guest speakers, but is really more of a social activity, if it's fair to say. And so great to see a new organization spring up to allow people to continue to be engaged in our community and meet their friends and neighbors. I had an opportunity to attend on behalf of council and lay the wreath at the Remembrance Day ceremonies at Revolution Place. And I want to thank the Revolution Place team for all the work that they do to organize that event and support the Legion, sorry, in organizing that event every year. On Sunday, the twelfth, I had an opportunity to go by the Grand Prairie Public Library to join with staff and doctors from the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit here at QE2 Hospital, where we had a celebration and recognition of World Prematurity Day and was pleased to make a proclamation in recognition of the families in our community who have had children prematurely and the professionals who support those families. And there was one, I also had an opportunity to, on Friday, the seventeenth, attend the Fifth Annual Grand Prairie Regional College Round, Community Round Dance. This round dance was held in Grand Prairie Regional College Gymnasium. There was food and there were people that had come from very far away to come to our community and join in this round dance, round dance celebration. I just wanted to congratulate the organizers of the round dance themselves, but also Grand Prairie Regional College for being a venue for this kind of cultural activity. It's great to see that that has an indoor home in our community over the course of the winter. On Saturday, the eighteenth, I had got up a bit early in the morning to go and make a presentation to a men's group at the Anglican Church. They get together on a monthly basis. They were looking for guest speakers, and guess what? We had just finished budget. And so you guys gave me, we had lots of fodder to talk about and was pleased to present to them on council's budget and our planning process that's coming up and what we look, look forward to over the course of our term. And with that, I think any other items had, were covered by other council members, and we'll call our council meeting adjourned. Thank you.